Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, May 11th at 7:00 PM, 2023, if we need to say the year. The first item on our agenda is a continued public hearing of a site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road. And at the applicant's request, they would like us to continue that hearing until May 8th at 7:00 PM. I'm sorry, June 8th at 7:00 PM. So...
So moved. Continued.
I have a motion.
I guess it is.
And a second. All those in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item on our agenda is a public hearing for 44 Clear Pond Road. This is approval of a definitive plan for a two-lot subdivision. The applicant did, I spoke with him today, and he has requested continuance. So he did not say date-specific. However, I will continue until our next meeting. Make a motion to continue the 44 Clear Pond Road public hearing until May 25th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Third item on our agenda is a public hearing for Stowe Estates, 35 Myrick Street. This is a definitive plan for a three-lot subdivision. And... Also, at the applicant's request, they would like to continue the May 8th meeting until May 25th. So I make a motion to continue
second.
Stowe Estates until May 25th, 7:00 PM. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, housing production plan review. Possible vote. Michelle, would you like to speak to that? I know you made a few other edits with the...
Sure. Yep, so I went through, I just kind of compared it to what I had had as a final draft. On page 3, you know, like she added in that beginning couple paragraphs that closely resembles our previous housing production plan. The only thing is at the end of that first paragraph, it says, "Many ponds, rivers, streams in town also serve as a source of drinking water for its residents." So just take out "for its residents" because we know that they serve other cities. So I would scratch those last three words in that first paragraph. On page 7, so now, they, you know, we've always kind of referred to it as safe harbor. When the town reaches a certain quantity of units, then you reach safe harbor, meaning they can deny a comprehensive permit. They seem to have changed it, the wording, to certification. So I would just like to add, under the "create more local control over chapter 40B proposals," that first paragraph, where it says, you know, "has a right to deny a comprehensive permit," referred to as reaching safe harbor. Just to keep the language consistent, because I felt like people who have heard the term "safe harbor" are going to read through this and not see it anywhere. So I'd like to just include that terminology back in.
Where are you wanting to add that added?
So, that's the...
To what sentence?
Um, so go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines down at... No, 6 lines down, at the end where it says, "Community zoning board of appeals has the right to deny a comprehensive permit, comma, referred to as reaching safe harbor."
Do you know anything about this, Kathy?
As far as...
Well, I mean, I want to get this done, and I almost think, if it's just, if they are changing the term, I feel like maybe we should have both in there. And to Michelle's points, have "reach safe harbor,"
And the right to deny.
or currently known as, or becoming, previously known as safe harbor, going to become known as certification. So at least you're acknowledging that there's been a change, and it's just not a hidden pass-through. So, like you said, Michelle, so people are, now, maybe they're seeking out the term "safe harbor," and it just can't be found.
Yeah.
So at least if we drew a connection to safe harbor and certification.
So previously referred to as safe harbor, you want that set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Um, the other comment is on page 17, underneath this chart. I had added in a, some wording, I guess, next to where it says, "Despite these high incomes, 19% of households in Lakeville make under $50,000 annually." And I had said that that illustrates diverse nature of Lakeville's housing stock. And so that is up to this board, whether or not you want to see that wording or just leave it out. Because I know we're talking about diverse housing, and if we have 19% of our residents that are in that income bracket currently, and I mean, we're trying to reach 10% subsidized housing in that income bracket, and we already have 19%, you know, not necessarily in subsidized housing, so it doesn't qualify, all these, not all of them qualify, but it does still show we do have diverse housing stock. So that, I was just going to say, I liked adding it in, but if no one else is...
The only thing I can speak to on this, this was brought up with several towns in the SERPET meetings, and it was an overwhelming response to leave it in reference to the way it's worded here and everyone's change.
Okay, so you mean just leave it out, don't say it's diverse?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only reason, I think, they're speaking to incomes, not the actual home values, so...
But they're talking about annual incomes for household, so we're saying that these households...
I know, but it doesn't necessarily speak to what kind of house they have. You would assume it might be a house that's on the lower end of the value spectrum, but...
Well, it could be rental, it could be...
Not a safe assumption.
No, no.
It could be rental, or, and it could be some of the 40Bs, or, you know, some of the rentals, but, I mean, to me, 19%, it does show a fair amount.
I think it shows a diverse population, but like I said, it's...
Doesn't qualify as low-end housing.
Right, because maybe not all, clearly not all of them are subsidized housing inventory numbers, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's definitely not that, because we are, what do we have, 6.5% subsidized housing? And we have 19% of annual incomes at less than $50,000. Obviously, they're not living in all the same subsidized, so it clearly calls out more homes than that.
So on page 33, I did notice the BIPOC was added back in here. And, I don't know. When I read through the first sentence, it says, "Whether we are conscious of it or not, the phrase 'affordable housing' summons up misguided images, potential neglect, loss of property value, and increased crime." So for me, that is some more of this like negativity. I would take out the word misguided and take out the word crime, and just put increased burden on emergency services. Because we know that there's, you know, if you live on Main Street, you know emergency services are going to certain areas of town with a higher density population.
Yeah, but the perception is, with affordable housing, that there's going to be increased crime. That's just a perception throughout the state, that affordable housing is going to bring in increased crime. And I will tell you, every one of these that I've read, and I've only read about a dozen, does have that statement in it. I have a feeling, Michelle, it's coming as a direction from the state. Don't know if it's tied to everything, but like I said, everyone I've read has had this statement in it almost verbatim.
Okay.
Was it true, the statement?
It is a true statement. It's just a negative statement. And we're trying not to have negative statements in the plan.
So, so leave that first sentence alone. And then what about the further down that paragraph? Where she added back in that BIPOC, which I don't think is used anywhere else in it now, and there's no definition or designation for it.
So I think that's a... It's a governmental injection, and it's revisionist history. The term "black indigenous people of color," or "black indigenous or people of color" is what it means. And if you look up the word "indigenous," that means "has always been here." We're not here, but "has always been where they call something home."
That is also a required statement from the state.
Is it?
Okay.
So we have to leave that in?
Yeah, we have to leave it in.
Oh, gosh.
We have to burn all the history books, too.
Move to Florida.
They just didn't...
On page 38, the map that shows the existing 40R district, and then it points to a potential 40B site. I am 100% against putting this on here. This is our town's housing production plan. And just because a developer wants to develop a priority protection parcel doesn't mean that it's the town's, you know, designated area for 40Bs. So I am okay with expanding the existing 40R, but that is a potential 40B site. I don't think it should be designated as such because it is a priority protection parcel, and it's been like that in our master plan.
What page are we on?
38.
38. I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Because that is protection land.
Are you talking about the potential 40B site, bottom of the map?
Yes.
Off the top of my head?
So I would just scratch that?
You're just scratching "potential"?
Yeah.
Well, it is.
Right, but it's not because the town has designated it. It's because a developer is pursuing that, despite it being a priority protection parcel for the town. And, I mean, if we want to talk about protecting indigenous people, there we go. And that was, that's a significant area for a number of tribes. The only other thing is on the next page, the page 39, it does talk about reducing lot size requirements. I don't know if anyone else is of the belief that it's, you know, not on its own, maybe under the OSRD of some sort, but just like a complete reduction of lots, lot size, just isn't keeping in character with the town.
I think this is just one of those things that, I think we've talked about it at length, that Lakeville doesn't necessarily have the means to do that because of the lack of public services, public sewer in particular. So, and everybody's on a private well also. So you're talking about well radiuses as well as, well, you got a well radius that you have to be 100 feet from a septic system. So to have a house, a well, and a septic system on one lot, they have to be 150 feet in one direction minimum, which our frontage is 175, and if there's some, uh...
Setback?
Well, you... There's actually, there's no setback well, but there is on a septic to be so many feet from a lot line, but if you don't have a lot that's as big as we require, because of the required Board of Health and state guidelines for wells and septic systems, you won't have a house on the neighboring lot. It'll be a vacant lot because the well becomes a spite well, to say you can't put your thing within...
100 feet.
Or even if you have a failed septic, and they have to look somewhere else, there's a lot of high water tables in town.
So I understand your concern about the language, but I think it's just one of those things that you sort of gnash your teeth and say, "I don't like the way that this is worded within the housing production plan." However, Lakeville can't do anything about that until they decide to, you know, either pony up and spend some money or find some grant money to put in either sewer or more public water to eliminate those well radiuses. So it's, again, it's, I don't take it as entirely negative. It's sort of a fact-based thing that just doesn't explain the whole story. You'd have to sit and do what I just did to explain why, which is unfortunate. It's, you know, it's almost like the document becomes leading or misleading, but that's, you know, the old housing production plan had things in it that were like that as well. You read it one time, and you're like, "Why did they say that?" But reality is, I think there was a similar thing in the previous one about the... But didn't they have something about the lack of sewer system? And that's like a hurdle, that inhibited development? That's something we're not going to do. I don't see financially we're not...
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, extending, yes, or, you know.
Spend 10 or 20 million dollars, and you're probably only going to get a small portion of town on it.
Right.
So, all right, I think you just leave it in and...
Still leave that one.
Deal with it.
All right. That was all of it. I mean, I did like the fact that there was some of that information about the nitroden sensitive areas added, and, you know, this extra section at the end that she had added about trying to negotiate perpetual deed restrictions. So that's good, because I did notice there was a, there was a part in one of the paragraphs I had added back in that showed, "These are the units that we have, and we're going to risk losing these ones coming up." And I was like, "Oh, you know, that's not in here," but then this kind of captures all that.
Yep.
So that's good. But I would like to see at least those couple modifications, but other than that, I...
Were you able to catch those ones in your notes?
Yeah.
And I think we could vote on it, understanding with those modifications, because this goes to select board next, correct?
Yeah.
Or back to the select board?
Correct. Do you want to make a motion based on those changes?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the SERPET final Lakeville housing production plan with the following changes. On page 3, removing the last sentence of the first paragraph.
The last three words.
Last three words, drinking down.
And the what?
It's the last three words.
And the last three words of the last sentence of the first paragraph. Then on page 7, did we decide to make this change to prefer to use safe harbor?
Previously referred to.
Kathy had the note.
Previously referred to as safe harbor.
Okay.
So certification and safe harbor would be noted in that sentence.
Yes, so certification, safe harbor would be noticed, noted on page 7 in the second paragraph towards the end. And I think the last one. Bear with me a second. What do you have as the last one, Kathy?
38. Page 38, the map.
38?
Yeah.
Ah, there it is. Removing on page 38 the word "potential" of 48B.
40B site, yeah.
Of 40B.
Yeah, I don't know if we, Kathy, do you know, do we have to include a potential 40B site? Or was that just suggested? You know, I don't know if that's there because that application's been submitted to the state. But if you want to make the motion conditional on SERPET's approval of these edits, you know, and we can try to remove it, and if she says you can't because it's already in process, then I guess it would have to stay.
Well, even if it's in process, it's not gone through all the final approvals.
Yeah.
I say we try to just eliminate it and see what happens.
I'm with you.
And then that's the last thing I have.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those were some back and forth changes that we went back and forth with SERPET about things. So the yellow is the latest version of the change.
Final version, it's just been highlighted.
Those were the most recent edits.
Right. So when it becomes a final document, there won't be any highlights?
So if those changes are all acceptable, can you have a motion just to forward this to the selectmen? So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to forward the housing production plan to the select board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So item 5 on the agenda is to discuss the notice of intent to change the land use to a residential 6 Barstow Street, which I passed you guys out, some correspondence that I got from town administrator regarding the select board meeting where they did discuss this. Some of that stuff in there is opinion, but the process is what it laid out, which I think is probably more of what our discussion should be based on. The town must obtain an appraisal of the fair market value at the town's expense and send the appraisal to the landowner within 30 days from receipt of the notice of intent. In this case, our deadline is May 22nd. The town has hired an independent appraiser to evaluate the property. Have been assured, May 16th, they would receive the appraisal. In the event that the landowner disagrees, the town's appraisal, the owner has 60 days of receipt to obtain a second appraisal. Although the owner submitted an appraisal for 3.5 million as part of the initial package, it appears that the appraisal may have included the built portions of the property, approximately 70,000 square feet, which is a residential house lot that's not within...
It's not 61A.
61A, so it wouldn't be part of the first refusal package. In that event, the town owner disagree on the owner's appraisal. 90 days go back and forth, more appraisals, argument. The town then has 120 days from the date in which the final price has been determined to decide whether to exercise its option to purchase the chapter land. The select board has indicated its interest in determining the fair market value of the property before considering whether it should be purchased. It is reasonable to assume that any effort to purchase the Holloway Burke Farm will require negotiations regarding non-chapter 61B land and would almost certainly involve a debt exclusion. There would likely also be discussions regarding the intended disposition of the property, given that the areas nearby have already been developed to some extent, and the property has not been identified as a priority protection area. Regardless, the determination of fair market value is an essential prerequisite to any discussion regarding Holloway Burke Farm. So, what do you got, Jack?
Why does the town have to pay for the appraisal? Because it is...
Because we disagree.
We have indicated its interest in determining the fair market value.
We disagree with the value of the appraisal that the, I'm going to call them, the applicant has given.
So we're disagreeing with the 3.5 million?
Yeah, if for no other reason, they've included the house lot, which isn't 61 chapter land. So why would that be included in the appraisal? Because it's not attached to the chapter land. Only the chapter land is what we would buy, in theory, unless that's... I don't know if that's legally attachable in the sale, if they say we want out, but I would think that's not the case. So more discussion will happen.
What's chapter land?
It's a tax vehicle that the state allows you to put property in 61A and B, and I think there's a C also, which are for recreation, for agriculture, for logging, for open space. It's basically to give you a tax shelter, so you're not paying... On 35 acres, you'd be paying based on about 20 house lots if it was not in chapter land.
Right.
In chapter land, you're paying about 1/10 of that in taxes.
Okay.
So it gives a farmer a way to not pay full property value taxes for residential house lots and be able to afford to farm. I'm going to say it's a state thing. I'm sure other states have something similar, but that's the Massachusetts version.
Okay, thank you.
So I did speak to the town administrator on this, and I suggested that maybe we could form a committee through them or the select board that when this process gets triggered, which they're also working towards a 61 process anyway. So I suggested the committee thing. He thought it was a good idea. I don't know if that will happen or if that will happen later down the road. So I think that would be a good way to open the line of communication. Or a planning board member, I had suggested the conservation commission should be somebody from Open Space, along with...
CPA, yeah.
CPA, member of the select board. I think bigger than that, though, Board of Health, you know, there should be a lot of people on that committee to give all facets of...
Almost every board we have could have.
Right. Even master recommendations, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, I think more to come, but I think that's where that's at, and we'll see. So if I hear any other communication, I'll let you guys know. So we have a review of the following zoning board of appeals petitions. A is Thompson for Hollis Ave. Has everybody had a chance to review these?
Mm-hmm. Thompson just wants to put in a bigger deck and on a different side of the house.
Residential, we don't want to touch that one.
No.
No.
Do you want to make a motion to make no recommendation for?
For Hollis.
For Hollis Ave?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to make no recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next one is twelve Dunbar Road.
He wants to build a garage.
Again, residential, I don't want to touch it. Does anybody agree with that?
Yes, I vote that we make no recommendation on twelve Dunbar.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Oh, wait, sorry, thirteen Dunbar.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
Oh, wait, it says twelve and, oh, the property is thirteen.
Right.
But I'm looking at.
The property is twelve, the owner's location.
Property location is thirteen.
Property location is thirteen, yeah.
So that doesn't change our motion.
Correct.
Other than correct property, so thirteen Dunbar. Next one is.
We, we actually move.
Oh. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next one is Bell, one thirteen Staple Shores Road.
They just want to raise the existing three-bedroom and put up a new three-bedroom dwelling.
Yep, which is a tear down.
So it's again, I don't think we should touch it.
Correct. So make a motion to make no recommendation on one thirteen Staple Shores Road.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that a unanimous vote?
Yep, aye.
Aye.
All right, so motion carries. The next one is the Lakeville Nursery Property, five Harding Street. Uh, this is a business property. The applicant has come through site plan review prior. Uh, he's looking to seek a special permit for automotive repairs within one of the bays. It's a contractor bay type of building that would not be, I don't believe, fully occupied by this one tenant, but he still wants to seek the ability to rent to that tenant, which that use of auto repairs is, it's, a special permit is required through the zoning board of appeals. So my thoughts and my recommendation, and Kathy, I would maybe ask you if you could circulate the plan to us, but I seem to recall that site plan that we did for there, the roadway access may be narrower than a, a full street. Uh, because of the wetland crossing, we, we allowed him a little smaller thing because it was going to be sort of private use by the tenants only. My fear is, uh, I did speak to the applicant and I have no problem with the use. It's, my understanding is it's just the growth in industry. Uh, auto dealer doesn't have enough room within their own space to service electric vehicles, so they wanted to do it at this site, which is fine, uh, from the mechanical standpoint, but where that driveway is narrower, I would ask that either the zoning board of appeals require them to widen the driveway to more of a public access or put in this special permit that the public was not able to access the property with vehicles for repair, that they would have to go to the dealership and then workers would bring them over as part of the transfer back and forth from the dealership to be worked on and then back there.
So this is going to be a facility that's doing work strictly for a dealership and not?
It is a dealership.
It is a dealership.
It's just they don't have the room within their dealership. And, and again, I, I say that cautiously, that I assume with planning and zoning, when we approve a restaurant, because we like the restaurant, that building can be sold in a different restaurant that you may not like, go in there because it's an allowed use. And Kathy, you could speak to this better than me, but through that special permit is that the owner of the property is going for the special permit, so he would be allowed to have a different entity go in and do that type of work within that space. He's seeking the special permit, not the dealership.
Correct.
So he, in theory, if that deal fell apart, could have other, another entity come in and do that type of work. So again, I just, our duty is vehi- vehicular pedestrian safety. And I think that's the one thing on that property that would affect us is just making sure because we approved it previously with, I think, a narrow driveway and allowed.
These, it does look like these are the old plans.
Twenty-four feet.
Because they're all signed by previous members. So I guess my question is, if they're going for a special permit, they're not going to have to come back to us for site plan review for this?
I don't believe so.
So it's just going to go off?
He's not changing, he's not changing anything on the site.
Okay, so we just, we're just sending comments. Yeah, I definitely agree with you, Mark, that, that would be a concern if there's a high traffic volume. I wonder if, is like a traffic study needed?
Doesn't automotive repair require like gas and oil separation of the ground outside? So if they're doing, even for electric vehicles, you know, if you, if you approve it for automotive use or?
Any commercial building.
Okay.
So I have a business that, if you pull a vehicle inside a building and it's a business property, you have to have tanks big enough to handle every fluid in every vehicle
Correct.
that spills out. So their system will have to be designed based on the use or the, the exposure. So, yeah, he'll have to have glass line tanks or whatever they are to collect all that if, if every drop of every liquid, all the vehicles.
Even though they're doing electric, right, for day one's electric, but obviously, if you get the special car for automotive, then you can, it opens the door.
Yep.
So are we sending a comment today, now, at this point?
Yeah, they're meeting next week, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it does look wide enough, but I guess even at that, where we're not doing site plan review, I mean, I would want to see signage so that people aren't driving maybe to the backside of the building where other contractors are working. You know, provisions or precautions should be taken if the public can go there.
So signage, but so you're retracting the suggestion about the?
Oh, no, I'm just, I guess we're talking it out. It, so if the driveway is wide enough to allow them to get in and out safely, it's not a matter of one vehicle has to pull off to the shoulder. The driveway is twenty-four feet wide. However, it is a commercial contractor bay building. And the potential tenant that he's seeking the special permit for only occupies a third of the building. If there is an adequate signage for those individuals to pull their cars in and they drive around the back of the building and, you know, could be a potentially dangerous situation if this guy doing welding and other stuff in the back parking lot, driving forklifts around. You know, you need a clear separation from the public area to the, the private contractor space.
Does the F can have enough room to widen the driveway or is that the usual?
Well, I, I think if the driveway doesn't need to be widened at twenty-four feet, but again, it's just we need to keep the public separate from the back of the building, so. And maybe that's the, the recommendation is that the zoning board of appeals, uh, do their best to keep public or private passenger vehicle traffic from, or, you know, just limited space. I don't know what just, how to word it.
The rear portion of the building.
Yeah.
To designated areas?
Yeah.
For safety?
Yeah, certain designated areas.
For safety and, and consider signage.
What do you got out of that garbled mess, Kathy?
No public access to the back of the building?
Yeah, and maybe adequate signage and designated parking spots for, uh, potential electric vehicle or repair customers, uh, to adequately house them in a safe spot rather than around the back of the building.
Clear elimination of, you know, public停车 spaces.
Yeah. I mean, at some point, it becomes their liability, but I think we still need to act on it as best we can.
Right, for safety pedestrians.
So what do you got, Kathy?
Um, no public access to the back of the building with adequate signage that clearly designates the parking for safety purposes.
Of automotive repair customers.
Got electric vehicles?
Well, again, if we approve electric and then they let somebody else in and the special permit carries, and it could be a guy that's doing repairs on internal combustion engines. So I think generalizing is probably not a bad thing. So what Kathy has is my motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll make that recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you, Kathy. Next item on the agenda is planning board goals, review of possible action.
Okay, everybody should have a very readable goal. I know we wanted to get it down marked about ten, but for the planning board, we are there uh, because there are two that are specific to, uh, the support team primarily, Mark. Actually, there's three, so we are down to nine for the planning board. Uh, so I'd like to go through these real quick. Uh, number one is review housing production plan. Uh, the time bound by on for that was June twenty-third. A draft's already under review. We already voted it on tonight, so once it's approved by the select board, we will have goal, the first goal approved, uh, I mean completed. Number two is a yearly review of the planning board goals, to ensure goals are being met and whether additional goals would need to be added. I picked May twenty-third as a date. We may find that that's not the appropriate timing because we're still deep in the trenches. I was thinking about this on the way over, maybe we want to move it to the fall when things kind of slow down a little bit and we don't have as many things before us and we have a chance to take a breath and, and talk about goals.
So may, if I could add to it, so when we first started talking about this, this was like November. And so here we are in May, so maybe even have like a start date of, like you said, in the fall, but to be completed. I think May is probably good because that's, you know, right after the election.
So put ATBC of November?
Yeah.
Well, I think you almost just should have like quarterly review.
Yeah, my, my, my thought is every, every other month in one of those meetings to just do a quick touch base.
Yep.
You know, if, if, who's ever in charge of a specific goal, uh, even if it's just generally the board, just where do we stand on it? What are we doing? Number three, this is one that really is assigned to, uh, Mark, but will have input on it, is establish individual goals for planner and support staff. I really would expect Mark to take the lead on that. I would definitely like on this one to see it in May. Uh, so that as we look at the next fiscal year and they start talking about budgets and everything, is there anything budgetary we need to support that staff? Number three, uh, four is establish tracking and map of buildable land area using Serpent. Coordinate with Serpent representative for the town. I have talked to them and they're willing to take this on with us. I have to speak with them again, uh, I think it's this week before our next meeting. And hopefully then they can take the, the lead in that and then just bring it to us similar to what they did with the housing plan for us to look it over and then improve it. And I think that's very important for us as we look at, as you've said all along, is that what is the buildable land area that is, that is available for us to build on? And make sure they're not accounting for roads and lakes and, uh, conservation land.
Yes. And you still have that spreadsheet too, that kind of has a basis. So hopefully they could take that. And do we know how many Serpent hours? So our Serpent hours, they start again in July?
They start again in July. We still have for planning board, some Serpent hours available. I was trying to get from Mark how many he's used because he had asked me to use twenty. Uh, I don't know if he's used all that twenty, but there's an additional ten available for us.
Okay. All right, so yeah, so if we can use that so they don't expire.
Right.
Get this going.
Um, review the current zoning map to ensure compatibility with existing uses. This one I think is, is fairly important. Uh, there's some, some very details built within that. Along with this review, the planning board should identify properties for zoning reclassifications uh, based on usage. Let's say as, as an example, if we found that Main Street was already using a warehouse, would we go ahead and reclassify him for the use that he was using the building? Okay, or do we have him in violation of that? I'm just thinking of that as an example, not for any other reason. Uh, look at open space residential needs to determine, uh, if bylaw is needed for that. Is there a need for an adult entertainment district? And I think I told everybody originally I was against that, but it seems that there is some reasonality to doing that. I just want to hear a little bit more from, uh, planner Mark on his experience with that in the past and why he feels there's a need.
But no, don't forget, we do have an adult bookstore, which the language in that does kind of encompass that adult entertainment too. So we do have that.
So maybe this is already addressed? Is it zone, is it?
Yeah, I think we.
Is it zone under mixed?
I think Mark brought that into the fray.
Yeah.
Creating the zone, and then it was brought to his attention that we already sort of had something, so.
Okay.
That may be something, that could be a quick check off the, the, the goals list if that's the case.
Yep.
But we definitely, I mean, if, if it doesn't completely check it, we definitely want to delve into it, I guess.
And that's so on three, I just drafted down, uh, bylaw changes, reviews and updates to bylaws. You know, we come across, like we did the change to the site plan review and what triggered that. Uh, building commission brought something to my attention that it might need a little tweak to catch other things that it's missing because of the triggers that we put on. And maybe that needs to be adjusted. Uh, so maybe that's the same sort of thing that we're going to do with that adult bookstore thing is to make sure that it fits in and covers entertainment district for the reasons that would protect the town.
Right.
It's just a, you know, it could be just a add three words or, you know, line out one thing. And that's a fall town meeting thing. So I think those things, I, like I say, I ended, details if needed, I put that next to three is kind of the, the bylaw review thing. So adult entertainment could fall in that same timeframe. And it changed that to fall, you know, that would, I would hope those simple edits like we did at last fall town meeting, I think we had eight zoning changes, which seven of them passed, seven of them were very small. And it was really just cleaning up our bylaws.
Right, right. Which is something we just have to continually do as things change. We just have to continually change, update. Uh, look at land to be further established as industrial growth land and water growth areas for all phases, all phases of zoning. Uh, number six, complete review of forty-R, forty-B and three-A for identification of applicable property. The, the detail behind that is there a need for modification of existing zoning bylaw to allow moderate densities and multifamily housing in appropriate locations? Uh, the planners to do developmental work to present to the board, work with developers to bring housing identified through survey to town, age restricted, affordable and assisted. Number seven, review planning board rules, guidelines. Number seven, review planning board rules, guidelines to ensure our consistency and updates target a complete review within five years. And here I just, we may want to create a little subcommittee to create a priority list of those that need to be developed or changed as a priority sooner than others. Electronic agendas be delivered weekly by noon on Friday preceding the meeting. Hard cutoff of seven days prior of submissions for the next meeting. That's for those people who are wanting to attend that meeting and present something. This is ongoing now, so I definitely am going to leave it on here until it becomes such a practice for us, it's just done. Hold one combined meeting with CPA and COMCOM. Again, I was looking at the December timeframe, November, December, where we don't seem to have as many things coming before us in those months. Implementation of applicable master plan goals and updating priority protection areas. We need to communicate this goal regularly with the master plan committee with any and all dates. Again, I think just the more that we can communicate with various committees that we interface with will just get us all more in sync. Adopt store mart or management bylaw. This was one that Mark's been pretty hot on doing, so I assign this to the planner to present this to the board for review, and I'm looking for that to be presented to us by July 23rd. And then the last is investigate transfer or developmental rights bylaw. Planner to define the need and present to the board for a go ahead. So now, since these are what we call smart rules, they have the ability to change as we deem necessary. If we get in the middle of a goal and we find ourselves really sidetracked by the goal, we would have to take a stop and a pause and is that the right goal that doesn't need to be broken down some? So while this is a document and I feel that we can go ahead and vote on it, it's a document that that's what we call in this world a living document. It can be changed.
The goals listed by order importance, like I think you indicated number four was fairly important.
I mean, if you want me to reprioritize them as?
That's Mark's goal.
I don't think, I guess the importance I have is by the date they've been assigned.
Okay.
And I don't think it's necessary, because I think some will fall off, like you said, the first one we were almost done with. So I mean, they will come and go and I don't know if an order is necessary if they all have dates.
Maybe if we get more sophisticated in it, we might start prioritizing. This is our first stab at it. Here's the rules.
Okay, looks good.
Yeah, I like it. So should we make a motion to accept these and have these included going forward on one meeting each month?
One meeting every other month. I think each month might be a little overkill unless it's due that month.
Okay.
I just added two notes, the one I talked about on item three and then on the joint meeting you suggested.
Yeah.
Just for what the agenda would be before we would schedule those.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah, I captured that, so we're good. So we have a motion?
Did somebody make a motion?
Yes.
Was there a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor of approving the goals?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve the February 9th minutes of meeting. Did everybody gain a chance to review these?
Yes.
They look good to me.
Yeah, they look good to me too.
And make a motion to approve the March 9th, 2023 minutes of meeting for the planning board.
That's drafted.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next meeting is May 25th at 7:00 PM here at the Lakeville Police Station where Mark is not present. I'm going to say we have no correspondence unless you brought something?
I did look through it, but it was nothing of importance.
Okay. Miss, would you like to address or you?
Oh, I was just, I live on 73 Harcourt at that, and I heard this department talked about what's going on for all of us, I guess.
Okay, so the applicant asked for a continuance.
Oh.
There were some changes they need to make to the plans and the peer review from our peer review entity did not come back yet, so it just seemed like it wasn't worth discussing, so they asked us to continue to the next meeting. So that, May 25th, we'll be back. I'm going to guess that'll probably be early on the agenda, so if you want to come back, try to come by seven because we'll get right into it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, the only question I have, and we've discussed this, I think as recently as the last meeting, is that there's been any further feedback from Freetown on?
On rail communities?
On the rail communities and what are they going to do and how many?
I thought that this was around the time where we were told by the select board that they would be arranging that or at least.
I thought was too, that's why I.
I'll reach out to?
Right?
Yeah, to this select board chair, through email, and just request some information, see if there's an update.
Yeah, obviously the concern is with the schools and.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then, Mr. Chair, if I may, kind of going along in the same genre as what we were talking about, reviewing certain things here and there, there is something I would like to possibly consider with the mixed use. You know how we had the presentation about the 19 single level units and then because of the setbacks, it's now turned into three-story apartment buildings? In conversations that I had with the zoning enforcement officer.
We've talked about this, Michelle. And I think the best plan of action is at this point to talk to either Zenith or Bo to see if they would be palatable, you know, want to try and stomach the timeframe if we were to try and do what Michelle's suggesting is we look at the mixed use zoning to change some of the setbacks to allow the first proposal at town meeting by just changing some setbacks to allow that to work with the 20-foot setbacks for residential rather than the 40-foot of business zone.
And that would then apply to anything in mixed use?
It would, yeah.
Any residential mixed use.
But it would have, it would have to be some sort of specific language that it would be only by a special permit if, you know?
Right, right.
X, Y and Z is.
I'm not against that at all.
Because just, just to be clear, it's not a zoning change. It would just be an allowance of.
And you think that'll get us back to that first presentation?
We need to ask him.
Yeah, I guess it has to be a conversation if they're willing.
I don't know what he's spent at this point. He may say, you know what, I'm further into it with the design stages and I'm going to stick on the path that I'm on and it would be futile for us to put the time into that.
That's Bo, right?
Yes. But he may say, yeah, you know what, if you can do that, I will. So I think we just need to ask him.
And then the sign bylaw that we recently passed, you know, we did this, you know, thinking, oh, this is great, this is, you know, perfect. And yet, so now we have special permit for these lit up signs, but there's no sort of standards for that special permit granting and the authority goes to ZBA. So my thought is, let's tweak the sign bylaw language, bring it back to PV, planning board for the, for just for the lit up signs portion and have some specific language when those signs would be allowable for a special permit. And keep, you know, let CBA keep the larger than signs that they're used to dealing with, but just for this specific special permit section to have an actual reason to grant that.
Again, the intent when the bylaw was changed was to give the planning board control over overnight use of signs, size of signs adjacent to residential areas, not to be just go for the special permit so you get it and it's done. So I think, you know, to Michelle's point, if we brought back that back to the planning board with a little language change to make sure that there is an understood criteria to the special permit of, like I say, time of day, size of sign, refresh rate, things like that.
Not across from residential.
So that would be, I think, a?
Fairly easy.
Fall town meeting.
Right.
Change to tweak, just bringing special permitting on that item, that portion of the sign bylaw relief, or not, it's not even relief, but just that special permit that we created back to the planning board rather than that one being the ZBA.
And then, I don't know if it's something that we want to consider, but with what, something maybe not exactly like what was brought to town meeting by the resident petition, but maybe something that more safeguarding to the town that could allow something similar or maybe an overlay in a certain section of the business zone that would possibly allow some distribution, but without it getting out of hand throughout town.
How would you do that? Because that almost sets a precedent if you allow it.
Well, so if there's an overlay, if we create an overlay section of maybe just Main Street or, you know, where it might be amenable. And to have maximums, because I know, like it said, you know, we had a minimum office with then this, a maximum warehouse, but maybe just an overall.
Do we get into spot zoning when we do those types of things? Just a question. I mean, that's the thing that pops to my mind.
So I, I'm inclined to not do anything on it until either we see examples in other towns of these types of businesses to know there's even a market for it. Or, and again, I don't want to spend the planning boards and the towns' legal resources reviewing bylaws and drafting bylaws that really at this point it appears to be for one individual. So I would be cautious with the effort that we do put into it. It would be one thing if we said, you know, we see these things popping up and, you know, there's two in Middleborough and there's one in Rochester and they seem to be good for the town, and see what their bylaws are or if there's a way that it gets controlled or if it's just part of their zoning, but I don't see a lot of businesses that are like that, either they're in an industrial area or.
I just know that just in speaking to certain people that live in that area, some of them really wanted to support it and they said, you know, like that was something they'd like to see in town, but I'm just trying to, you know, think of something that potentially might work to get planning board support. And then, but we can, yeah, we can keep that just on the back burner and like you said, see if there's any other towns.
Yeah, I think we've mentioned, you know, probably three things that come up tonight of bylaw changes and improvements. I'd rather see those get done by fall town meeting than that. Maybe if by spring, if there's still an appetite for that, we do that for next year.
Yeah, maybe when you mention, so that when you mention the name warehouse, it doesn't bring up hires.
Right.
So I think that concludes tonight's business, so make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.